The United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Claudia?
Here.
I think it's Tracy Allen?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Annette?
She's in the lead.
John?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Al?
Here.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice that this regular meeting be publicized by having the date, time, and place sent to the Record, Record, and the Star Ledger newspapers, the constituent borough clerks, and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school district principal offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lot, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100.
The Commission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community in an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standard. Standards.
Thank you. Now, we move into public comments on agenda items only, and I see we have nobody out in the public. So we have a presentation tonight. Vito?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Vito to readdress, if you will, our Start Strong results from our exams. If you recall, we gave a very detailed presentation in October. However, subsequent to that, and much of this data, we were able to extract from our files and be part of that other presentation. However, because we're being CUSAC, we're also going to give an update to the Start Strong aspect of that previous presentation by our Assistant Superintendent Vito. I also want to give a shout out to Jen Ali. She's been a great manipulator of data so that we could present it for you.
That doesn't sound right. I know.
She's been...
Collater.
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 She's been able to extract the data from the state files so that we can understand it.
And like Mr. Fletcher addressed, most of this, except for two or three slides, was presented in October to you as part of our comprehensive testing requirement. But subsequently, the DOE released this template last week, and so, as keeping with our being CUSAC, I wanted to make sure that we hit each of the domains that are required. We did go over what Start Strong assesses, so I am gonna go very quickly through this for you since we've already done this. It was administered to our students. The design of the test was short, really with high release quality items coming back to us very quickly. These are the tests and the alignment of the grades. Again, alignment, math, course enrollment, in which who takes the Start Strong assessment. And then, just looking at the interpretation of these, we're not presenting individual scores, obviously, we're looking at the scope and sequence for student support, and we're just looking at the data. And Ms. Ali did help analyze this for us. This is an example of how the data is presented to us. This was one of the slides that we did not have the data for in October, and this tells you the total number of students that took each of the exams that were administered. So you can see, we have over 1,200 students taking this exam in math, and over 1,000 in ELA, and 485 in science. These are our results in English Language Arts. You can see, all the way to the left is more support needed, and all the way to the right is less support needed. These are done by percentiles. See, our students have a lot of less support in the 70 range there, which is great. Here's our mathematics leveled support, again, based on the tests that they took. These are our science support levels, grades nine and 12th. And this was one of the data slides that we did not have in October. What we do have now, I think Stephanie asked me about this originally, was breaking down subgroups of our percentiles for our subgroups that we have. So here presented is our students with IEPs, different genders, ELL, 504 IEP students. This is for Language Arts. So, does anybody have any questions? Okay. And then, this is the same breakdown of our subgroups for Mathematics. And any group who was a smaller subscore than required for identification, which is 10 and under, we did not report out. So if there was a group missing, it was because they could be easily identified. And that would be why the asterisks are there. Science. And then, as Mr. Fletcher said, Ms. Ali helped me with the graph. We worked on the color. She was not going for red, yellow, and green, so we went with purple, orange, and blue. The purple represents less support needed in each of these. This is our English Language Arts, and that goes across all of the subgroups. And this is just a chart representation of the data I just presented to you.
What's that one, the third one from the left that has a more blue...
That is our IEP students. IEP students.
How about...
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, go back one more.
Yeah, sure.
And what's all the way on the right?
All the way on the right is economically disadvantaged. The last one to the right, right? Yeah. Oh, this is our Mathematics chart, based on the data of those subgroups. And our... Yeah, sure. English? Yeah.
So there isn't an ELL in English?
If there was an ELL, it was too small to report.
Okay, but I was just like, wait, that looked different.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to mention that, because not every test had the same number of test takers. And so, dependent on the group, we are... we cannot report those out for confidentiality. So that was math, and then our Science subgroups.
When we identify those patterns, what happens? What do we do? We've identified a group, right? So what happens? Do we do anything more than what we normally would do in order to try to deal with that for subsequent years?
I mean, we create action plans based on those patterns that we see. So that entails support, that entails programming that we're working on, tutoring, all those kinds of things. I'm gonna go over that in the next slide. We'll be done.
Do we correlate any of this back to student cohorts and just, you know, their progression to see if we're actually making an impact?
Mm-hmm. We look at longitudinal data over time.
Do we have any graphs that could report that, too?
So, I do. We do have some graphs that I can share with you if you want.
This is only the second year of this.
This... So, first Start Strong, I don't know if you're talking about global exams, or you're talking about Start Strong?
I mean, this is the data in front of us, right, today? But I'm sure, however we're measuring it, if this is a good measure of whatever we're measuring, you know, if it's two years, hopefully, the state will stop changing the tests every few years, so you have data you can compare, you know?
So, John? It's a good question. So let me try to answer all of the questions, I think, that you're asking. This test was designed to provide a very early-in-the-year snapshot of student performance so that you could determine if a student needed to be supported from the period of time that you get the result through the administration of the SLA, NJSLA, later in the spring. So if you recall, in October, we gave you the report that we did have that longitudinal data specifically for NJSLA, which is what I just want to remind everybody of. If you saw our... if you remember, our post-pandemic results and our pre-pandemic results, they were still very close in English, a little bit greater of a loss, if you will, I don't even like to use that term, in Mathematics. But overall, Riverdale compared to the state, compared to global, our students did pretty well throughout the imposition of the pandemic.
And I think I may have asked last time, we no longer have district factors to compare to?
Correct.
Correct. We do not.
Which is unfortunate, because...
That is very unfortunate, comparing us to the state. Not that that's a bad thing, but...
It was much more, I thought, like you. I think it was better representative.
Vito, well, we don't need the information. It can be drilled down to see if they're doing stronger in algebra than they are in geometry, and, right?
Yeah. You can look at comparative.
This is just all the math in general, or all the English in general, or science in general.
Yep. And then, this is, as you mentioned, these were some of the intervention strategies that we had put into place. I shared these with you in October, and we'll continue to put those interventions in place to help our students. As Mr. Fletcher said, our students did really well in the NJSLA, and that is coming up. We are planning for that, and so, we are hoping for similar results. That is it.
And the link, just once...
Oh, sure.
The link is that support for the state is what they want to do, is to see, okay, we gave you all this data, now what are you doing with it? And what are we doing with it? These are examples of how we take those groups of students that need more support and provide them that support. And these are in addition to the regular instructional program. This is extra stuff. That's what's important to those folks.
Yeah, we're collating that information for them.
So, like you said, a quick presentation, though.
Yeah, it was just quick. Like I said, you had most of this data. We'll put this on the website as well, and if you want to refer to it and get in touch with me, you're more than welcome, too. But most of this information was on the original presentation. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Graff, I could just remind the board, all three of our student liaisons have conflicts on Tuesdays, so anytime we move them, we meet into Tuesday.
Right.
We have one who has an internship and one, two, who are involved in sports. That's why Monday's a better night, but...
Also, parking's better.
Parking's better?
Oh, my goodness, right?
On Tuesday?
I think I'm like on the other side of Oradell.
Oh, because of the game, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's okay. You can give me a lift to my car.
My report tonight is short. I have one item here, and I've kept this because I'm contributing myself, cleaning out my closets. Riverdale Project graduation this Saturday, the 21st, at the Oval. They're collecting clothing and shoe fund drive from 9 to 1 o'clock. All items must be tied in plastic bags, so if you can help them out. And then, everybody probably received this email today. School Boards has a meeting on Monday, January 30th, and it's gonna be a virtual county meeting, and January's meeting topic will be a two-part discussion on mental health, specifically mentoring. So you can sign up or have Trudy sign you up for that, for that meeting. That's all I had for tonight, although I did mention to Trudy, maybe we get another table in here for our next meeting, kind of spread this out a little bit. I think we're kind of tight on this side specifically. Okay, Patrick?
No report tonight.
Okay. Committee reports, since the committees were just formed a week or two ago, I know Patrick will put his committee meetings to a calendar shortly, and Trudy will do the same, right, with budget, finance, and facilities. I know we did have one brief meeting tonight, and John will fill us in on what happened in the facilities and security meeting prior to Executive. I think. John? You want to report anything?
No, we're just talking.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
We do have a new committee. I was hoping that we could get our new members kind of on the same page and do a smooth transition. So we have Claudia and Annette on the new committee. I was on the committee last year. We focus primarily on the referendum items, which we'll talk about a little bit today. The one item is, you know, there was two timelines of September and December. The committee absolutely feels the September timeline makes no sense. December probably is a more ideal timeline. We did talk about the admin recommendation, which I'm sure we'll go through today, and the general consensus is that we need to talk as a board and get aligned what kind of makes sense, so the board is aligned, and we could put together a proper package for the public in order for us to present something. And that was basically it. We just talked and tried to get kind of roughly on the same page from what we had available, from the architect, from their review, what the report meant, how do we understand those priorities, and just a general discussion about the administration recommendations. So based on how the meeting goes today and what the takeaways are, we'll see what falls to our committee, and we'll go, we'll work with Trudy, and, you know, come back as a committee, back to the board with whatever we can bring back. So no significant decisions or anything, but just to pick up from where we left off from last year, so we can continue this year.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move into the consent agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll second or make the motion, or whatever.
I have Stephanie first, and is that okay, Trudy? And Claudia will second?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any questions on consent?
It's just nice to see on 13E, under Finance and District Operations, that they started a Cubby Cohen Memorial Scholarship.
Yes.
Oh, I love that. I just saw that.
Did you see the amount of the contribution?
Yes. Yes.
$1,693.
Must be a fundraiser.
That's nice.
Stephanie?
So, not related to this specific calendar, but the calendar in general, like, for people who don't maybe know, for those out there in the sphere, who don't know, like, all the elements that go into making up a calendar between our sending districts and Region Five, and testing and all of that, you know, it seems very straightforward, but it's a little more complex than it might appear, and of course, it fluctuates every year. But, Al, I would like to maybe propose back to challenge New Jersey School Boards to consider having people talk about their calendars as a... at a regional meeting, because lots of different people have taken different takes on it over the last few years, and I think it would be interesting to hear how people are balancing communities, their desire for global awareness, whether they're marking a day by taking off, whether they're marking a day by doing something within school, whether they're marking a day, or days, holidays, it could be more than one, by the way they're doing their programming, you know, and curriculum around that timeframe. I just think it would be good to hear how other people are approaching it, and everybody's gonna have a different approach, so that we could consider different approaches going forward, if that's something the board desires. So it's not really related to this per se.
Okay. I'll contact the New Jersey School Boards and see what they'll say.
Thank you.
You got it. Anybody else have anything on the consent agenda? No? You're good? Okay, Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. Okay. First vote outside consent is on number 12, miscellaneous. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the second reading of the following policies. 3,000 series, 3327, relations with vendors, 3515...
Weird way to word it.
I'm sorry?
It's such a weird way to word it.
Relation with...
Yeah.
3515? I'm just reading what it says.
I know. I wasn't talking about you.
Okay, smoking prohibition. This is the second reading, so it is open to any public comments. Any comments at the table? BOE, behind the cameras? No comments? Okay. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. It's my last time motioning for this.
Second?
I'll second.
Stephanie? Okay.
You're up.
And Trudy, when you're ready.
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. The second vote outside consent is under 13 Finance District Operation. Letter D, the superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending December 2022. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Tracy Allen?
Yes. Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. May I make a motion to bring over a couple of items from the executive agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Claudia, thank you. Somebody want to second that for me?
I'll second.
Doug, thank you. Let me read the three items that we are going to be carrying over from Executive. Under A Special Request, number two, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointments of the following Riverdale staff members to work additional schedules as noted for the 2022-2023 school year at salaries as per the RDEA agreement. And we're covering Honors Spanish I, Spanish III, Honors Spanish II, AP Biology, Honors Biology, AP Biology. This second item is B1, resignations and retirements. of instructional aide Liam Oberlander effective January 16, 2023. And D1, salary adjustments corrections. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the salary adjustment for teacher of art Angela.
Anacino.
Anacino. From 77075 BA plus 16 Step 10 to 79932 BA Step 10 effective February 1, 2023, for the 2022-2023 school year as per the RDEA agreement. Those would be the three items we are carrying over from executive. And Trudy, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to old business, new business. Stephanie?
Well, I'm sorry our students aren't here today, but January 22nd is Ukrainian Unity Day, and there's sort of a hashtag campaign going on, sunflowers. So just kind of putting it out there for any, I know our students like to participate in global efforts, so maybe if you can trickle down or even come up on our little screen when they walk in the building over the next day or two, anyone who might want to participate could.
Anybody else have anything?
I have one. I think last time for the treasurer's school monies, we had the unfortunate news. And then we were going to do a search. Have we made any progress, Pat, to finding a suitable replacement? Or is too quick?
Not yet. We haven't made progress enough to make a recommendation yet, sorry.
So when we approved, what we approved on the agenda, that was a recommendation for, like, 13.
To March.
One of these. The chair wanted this.
To March.
Who is signing those until March?
I will.
You do.
Trudy. And I'll review.
And you review.
Okay.
Alan, please.
Yes. Go ahead, Alan.
Under new business, just want to announce that we just signed a contract for the Ford Golf outing on June 26. So put it on your calendars early. If you can make it, that would be great.
Do you know what day that is, Alan?
I believe it's a Monday.
Wait, he has the calendar. Don't you have a calendar in front of you?
It is Monday.
And is it at the same place?
Yes. Yes.
Rivervale.
Rivervale, right?
Yep, Rivervale Country Club, Old Golf Club. I'm not sure what they.
The calendar we just approved is not the one we're referencing. We're referencing the existing calendar. Calendar we approve is for next year, so this June 26th is a Monday. This year, '23.
Old business, new business. Anybody else have anything? Nah, I'm not going to say that. Okay, we have board discussions, so we're going to referendum considerations. Oh, look, it's not like, does anyone else get newjersey.com?
No.
No.
It's northjersey.com.
Yeah.
It's like the.
It's a burger record, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think we all can appreciate the way we work here in our board meetings. Did you happen to see the Ramapo and Indian Hills situation? What happened up there?
Ooh. Did it get physical?
I printed it out. I don't want to get into it here. I have one article if you guys want to, you know, at some point, read it. It's just, it's, it's, it got political, the votes, and it's just, no school district should have to go through that.
No politics.
Yeah, you know, it's a shame, but, and I don't know that I should have brought it up here, but I'm just, I'm very fortunate. I think we're all very fortunate, the way we work here. If we don't agree with things, we find a way to get through it and work to make a productive district, I think. So anyway, that's all I have. Patrick, where's Patrick?
Are you bringing it up on the screen?
I'm going to work from this point over here. It's not real important that you need to look at me. I wanted to show you the district-wide facility plan to bring everybody up to speed. Again, what took place is about a year ago, the Board of Education engaged our architect, Solutions Architecture, to review the facilities of the district to determine what items might be warranted to go into a referendum. Can you guys see okay with the camera? Is that okay? Do you want me to turn one of the lights off? You got it? Thanks. So the architect firm did do that, and they met with the facilities committee at the time, which was prior to our reorganization. And when they came up with an original spreadsheet of projects, it totaled a little bit over $30, $31 million. Subsequent to that, we have provided to, to the board, we, meaning the administration, have provided to the board two separate listings of items that we believe should be included in a referendum. And subsequent to that, I asked the architect to make some adjustments to his presentation so that you could, in effect, see what the impact is of the recommendations that we're making. However, during some of our conversations, board members had asked, you know, where is the work going to be done? What are we talking about in room 316, as an example? So all of you board members have access to this report. I'm just going to walk through a couple of pieces of it so that you have some opportunity to review it. So in the middle school, when I go to view the report, one of the items that comes up is the fact that you have a visual tour of the facility. So you can go take a tour through the facility. This is the middle school main floor. It's just loading up. And what you can see here is this is a visual representation of all of the items that are in the school district, okay, or in the building. And this is a, like I said, it's a representation of, of all of the rooms that we have in the, in the middle school. And it's a 3D representation. So as an example, in the recommendations that we made to you, one of the items was to look at the foods room, which I'm trying to get to here. Okay, this is down the hallway. This is track and field. So here, I think, is the foods room. Yep. So here's the foods room, okay? Or the nutrition room. And the board has the ability, each of you have the ability, to go physically enter the space to determine what we're talking about, okay? And you will have a correlation between the items that are in these rooms and your visual representation. So as an example, here is the music studio that is adjacent. Oh, wait a minute, sorry, this is going around the corner here. This is the instructional part of the foods room. So here you are back, we were in this door over here. Now we came into this door. You can get a really good feel for what it is that the facility has. This is an actual representation of the room. Clearly, there's no students in it, but you can see the foods room. You can get an up closer personal room or up closer personal view, and you can then match it to the recommendations that we're making for moving forward here. Let me go back outside for a second and show you the navigational aspect of this. And if I go a little further down that same hallway, this is the music studio that I had, that we had mentioned to you as well as rooms that need to get some additional work done to them so that they become very flexible spaces. You can always go back to the, the main view of the district by, sorry. Here's a full screen. I apologize. Let me get out of that. I'm sorry, I got to jump back here to the. So down here, you can see this little view floor plan, and that's what we're talking about. When we go into the back of the building, opposite the courtyard from where we were just talking, now we're in the art room. One of the areas that we're talking about to get refurbished. And you can get a better idea, because if you pull in tight to this area, you can see here that the slap sinks and the additional workspaces are quite old. Been around for quite a long time, needs an upgrade. If I go back to the entrance here, go back out, directly across from the art room are what we would call our tech rooms. There's actually three rooms together. You have one room over here, which is a larger group instructional area. You have an office space in the middle. And then over here, you have the old laboratory or wood shop that still has working machinery in it that are used during our tech programs. When I go across the way, as an example, one of the differences between our recommendations and the recommendations that, that was not included in the architect's report is this room, which is adjacent to the art room. This is what I refer to as the tech room, because this is where our technology department has their stuff to help assist the middle school students when they have problems. Whereas if you were up here at the high school, you all know, you come in the main entrance, and the tech room's to the left over there. So you can correspond the items that were on the report that I had provided to you in two different formats, one on December 8th, pardon me, for just leaning in here, and one as a part of the district goals report that came out on the 19th, okay? Then in the executive summary of that report, you have the ability now to physically actually see the rooms that we're talking about and the ability to create some additional flexibility.
That dropdown in the upper left-hand corner.
All right, let me get in there for you.
Yeah, because, and you get around much better than I do, by the way. If that dropdown in the upper left-hand corner.
This one?
Yeah. And the, can you hit the, what does it say up top, tags?
Issue tags.
Right. Now, is this where they had everything tagged in each room, where we could hit it? And their suggestions were to fix certain things?
Like, they did tag the items that were in the report.
Right.
They're like little.
Their first report.
I don't know where they are in this plan, but there were tags where you could.
Right.
Click on it. Oh, right there, there's one in the back, you see.
Okay, see, and that's, boom. That was the architect's suggestion, not necessarily what is on the executive summary.
Right.
But that was an interesting little feature that they had put in.
So one of the things that I think is important for us is to recognize that there are some differences between what we recommended as administration and what is ultimately going to end up to be into, in the final report or final thing, should we want to do that? Because I want to show you.
Patrick, before you click away, can I ask a question?
Of course.
So when you're on this main floor plan with issue tags, are those circles color-coded in a meaningful way?
Yes, they, they, in the, in the, I'll show you where in the report that answers that question. But basically, these correspond to the priorities that the architect has placed on it. He has color-coded what he considers to be. But I want to show you, as an example, if we go into the auditorium, okay? You can see here, all right, that there, here's one of your tags, right? Renovations to the auditorium stage include furniture finishes, graphics, acoustics, lighting. Up here, HVA system replacement. So the middle school auditorium is not air-conditioned. I think it's, my recommendation is that you do so. You have all the other spaces largely provided up there. And when we have large group of assemblies, it would, it would work to our advantage. It could also be used more flexibly as a part of a community support group where they could have activities that are in here. But you will see that in the report, when you go to the physical report, which I'll show you in a second, they, the architect has come up with an amount that is in excess of $2 million to review this facility. That is, he's using a formula based upon a square footage, a amount of renovations, times the square footage that's available in there, coming up with that number. That is in no way, shape, or form something that we, as administration, were recommending. We're not recommending, as an example, that we would take out all the seating and replace the seating. It's fine. We've done it in the past. It's ready. It's still good to go. So those numbers that are in the report, I think in certain areas are inflated, but that if the Board of Education came to the conclusion that, yes, we wanted to include the auditorium in a referendum discussion, then then we, we, meaning administration, would work closely with the architect to refine that number so that we get down to something that is reasonable, lines up with what it is that we are, in fact, talking about. Yep?
It might not be on either thing, but it just kind of comes up in, in the auditorium. So, you know, sound is always an issue, no matter what auditorium you're in.
Correct.
Even, probably even if we, you know, redo the sound system, sound will be an issue, especially because we like live music with our musicals, and sometimes that can be competitive with the voices of our. Are there, and, and yes, I know I wouldn't necessarily put in carpet, because even though you're not really supposed to eat in there, you know, and I'm not the best rule follower, you know that. But like, are there floorings that, like, even though we wouldn't really necessarily think to redo something like that, like, spending the money on the sound system, if then it's like still reverbing against all of the poor choices in the room, like, would there be flooring considerations that nobody would have thought of because there's nothing really wrong with the floor that would make sense to do? Does that?
Yes.
I know that was.
No, that's a very good question. So when, when I open up the spreadsheet for you to take a look at, you'll see that there's a column for what they call soft costs, right? Soft costs are those costs that are associated with the professionals, so to speak, that you would bring in to assist you in design. In the point you're raising, what would be important for us is to bring in someone who is versed in acoustics, an acoustical engineer, to look at the facility, look at the space, and match the sound that we're pumping out through the sound system to finishes that you raised, you said carpet as an example. But you could put finishes up on the wall. You know, there are, there are things that you can hang from the ceiling that help to baffle the sound, et cetera. And that all has to be done in conjunction with other things like, and it's kind of funny that you, you can see it right here at the top of the, right above the word floor, right? That is a part of the fire, the fire warning system. We have what call, we have laser bands that go across the roof. You can't see them, but they're reflected back and forth so that if the laser gets broken by smoke or something else, it would go, it sets off the alarm. Interestingly enough, what we often, what we often have a problem with is that they bring balloons in as a part of the thing. The balloons go up and set off the alarm on a regular basis. So anyway, the, the point is that included in your soft costs would be those kinds of things that you would want to do. Bring in an acoustical engineer. Maybe the one that worked on the Geffen auditorium at Lincoln Center? I don't know. We'll see. So I think what would be helpful for the board members is to take a look and. So I, I think what would be helpful for the board members is to take a look and see what it is that we're talking about that's here as a far, as a part of it. Now, the highest, the middle school has one floor, it's a main floor, it's one building, it's all there. Let me go, let me close this, let me go back to the, back to the report. So you have the visual representation, okay? And then you have the room listings and the budget estimate that the architect has put together. So to your question, Tracy Ellen, that you're asking about priorities, one, two through four have a color code that you would pick up from, from the other part of the report, which we'll show you. So what the architect has done is taken the original report, and there's much more to this report, and a lot of it is predicated by this column here, yes or no. If it's a no, we're not including the cost in the estimate. If it's a yes, you're including the cost in the estimate. So what the architect did is he went back to the plan, went looking through the, and tried to compare to the list that we presented, and he's, the, the recommendation at the end of this is roughly, I think it's roughly $18 million, I don't have it quite in front of me, but roughly $18 million, they have it. Now, this is the high school report. There's a middle school report. And you can see here, the highlighted, whether it's included or not, and the architect has the ability to turn this on, yes or no, to include in it. You have your totals by school, here's your $18 million. And then you have contribution from the state of roughly, in this example, almost $8 million. You come back to a total final cost after debt service of $15 million. So there's the ability to get some monies back from the state on this. And then here is a priority estimate of basically our recommendations, one through four. For me, at this particular point, and why I'm hoping that we don't overthink this situation, the numbers that are in the construction costs, the numbers that are in the debt service, the numbers that are hidden that are up here, soft costs, et cetera, et cetera, are not quite as important at this stage of the game as identifying what you would do to put into the project. Because if you have a list of projects, then what you can do is refine the cost to a better place. Because as we did with the example of the auditorium, we would say, I appreciate what you did, but we're talking about this, what's the real cost associated with it, instead of $2.5 million, which is nowhere near what we would have imagined for you, that are, that are on here. And if you were to look at the, the items that were recommended to you in the, in the executive summary of it, every item except for the wiring piece that was there, the tech room in the middle school, and the area adjacent to athletic director's office were surveyed by the architect and are in there. Those three areas, which we've recommended are, or are not there, but it's easy enough to, to add those costs back in so that you could have it. So what I really think would be the most important thing for us to do at some point or another is, if you look at, let's, let me try to get a better view for you. Let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it less for a second. Okay? You can see here that what the architect has done, as I mentioned, he has built into this, yes or no, what's the square footage? You can see here, you can see here what he's using as a cost associated with the square footage for renovation, what it turns out to be, and then moving forward across here. There are some hidden columns that are in here that include stuff, so again, I wouldn't get hung up on the money, so to speak, as I would get hung up on this column right here, potential projects. Because whether or not the architect has identified it or not as to be part of the referendum, you can see no here, these are things that you may wish to include. And you can see here that this is a priority, number one, which means it's something that's critical. Report tag, this is where it refers to, back in the individual, individual reports, and this is a description of the, of the items. So you can see, as you move down through here, you have many items that are identified as ones, twos, threes. Most of the ones are items that were included already in the recommendations that we made to you, and that's because we, we, meaning the administration, have, we live in the building. We live in the building every day. We know what areas need to kind of be worked on and what areas don't need to be worked on. There are some items that are included in here which are not glamorous at all, and that is replacing HVAC units, making sure that we have a better control system on how those HVAC units, units work, working on boilers. The boilers that are in the middle school are in much better, I'm sorry, the boilers in the high school are in much better shape, because they're newer than the ones in the middle school, because we replaced the ones in the high school with the previous referendum we did not in the middle school. Those are the old, original boilers. However, they're working great, that's the type of boiler that's in there that's nice, it works fantastically. But there's no controls on the boilers. So in effect, what's happening is our people are going around turning boilers on, turning boilers off, to control heat throughout the building. And that shouldn't be the case in this age. You should have, we have multiple boilers. Once you come in in the morning on a particularly cold morning, you blow the boilers hot, you get the heat stabilized, and then you go through a process where you only have one boiler on at a time, and then while that's in, the other one's dormant, and then they reverse, the dormant one comes up, and the one that was in action goes down. They call that lead-lag timing. But what that does is extends the life of the boiler, because you don't shock the boilers to turn them on and then turn them off, and you have them on constantly, but you're always fluctuating which one has more power being pushed out than the other. Not glamorous, but will add to the, to safety and the condition of the building. Unit ventilators. You can see in our recommendations that we've said all of the 900 wing, all right? So if you know what the 900 wing is, it's upstairs. It's the entire second floor of the high school. That is an area that we're talking about redoing. Most of the, of the univentilators in the middle school would also have some form of replacement. Sometimes you don't replace the case that the univentilator's in, but you replace the guts that are in there. And that's, in fact, what we've done in several areas of the middle school. But anybody who's been in the middle school knows that there's hot and cold spots in that building, the heat's not uniform, particularly in the wing where the, where the, where the superintendent of business office are. And the wing, that wing, which was added to the building quite a while ago, has an uneven heat distribution, and sometimes it gets pretty cold at one end of the hallway and not, and warm at the other end, it's just the way it is. Those are things that we're talking about replacing. So in order to kind of help cut through a lot of that nonsense, we, we, as the administration, made the recommendations to you in the executive summary. What the architect then did is he turned the switches on, include the project in, yes or no, included most of those items that were in there, and came up with roughly what would be, in the version that's in front of you now, a $15 million referendum, 18 million with a $3 million contribution from the state, down to 15 million is what you would be using for your taxes. But again, I said that number's high. So I think what's important for us to do is to focus on the projects. What projects would you include in a referendum? Then you can get, we can get the numbers from the architect and then move forward. Because at this point, we had a very brief conversation, I think, John, you can add to it in the, in the facilities committee, there are two timelines that we're looking at. We, we still are potentially able to have a referendum in September. However, there's a lot of steps that need to get done, and we would need more, I think the deadline for hitting that is February 13th. If we wanted to try to submit projects to the state for approval, we would need to have a list of projects identified, consensus drawn, project, costs refined, submitted to the state for consideration in order to try to meet a September deadline. We have a little bit more time if we're gonna hit a December deadline. I think the architect had May 8th as their date, I could be wrong on that. I still would not push that, I would, if we decided that we're gonna go with a December, I'd still try to execute the identification of the projects as quickly as we can so that we could get the other information.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You submit to the state, is it like the budget, in the sense that, like, you make that submission, but then there's like that timeframe in which you can tweak, and then you have your, like, you know, final budget that's presented to the public? Is there, is there, like, here's essentially what we think we're doing, but like, could you then tweak it?
Well, the answer to your question is yes, but that's not really at the discretion of the state. What the state is doing is not saying whether or not your project is good or bad, or the items in it are good or bad. What they're saying is that we've reviewed it according to code, and you can go forward with it. So they're making, what the review by the state is, they're actually gonna look at your blueprints, right? They're gonna say, we, we, you know, you're renovating the auditorium, what are you doing? And they'll have a code to force an officer down there to review those plans and say, yes, it's good, no, it isn't. There's another level, which is an educational component to it, but that's a plan that we write where they match things up. But they're looking at whether or not you're in compliance with code. You have the ability to continue to refine the number that you use, but at some point you gotta put a stake in the ground, and you have to make sure that you word the question that you bring forward to the community carefully, so that, and I'm just, I'm being completely crazy here, so that it's just for the example, you put forward $100 million of referendum stuff, right? You make sure that you have some flexibility in there, so that if you bid the projects and they come in at 90 million, and you have $10 million left over, that you then have the ability to say, okay, we can enhance what we were offering a little bit, because we worded the question properly, and we got lucky on the budget. Okay? There are districts that that's happened to. In a previous life, in a previous district, that is exactly what happened. The, the referendum, the, the request for proposals came in well below what we budgeted. So we had some flexibility, and we were able to do some additional projects, things like that.
Does the state see those things beforehand? Or, like, so, let's say, let's say, you know, we put forward, I'll be more realistic.
Yeah.
A $14 million referendum.
Yeah.
And it comes in at 12.5.
Right.
Do, do we, would the state already need to know what the, what that, what those extras that we might look at would be, or you can do it in real time?
You can, you can do it in real time, but you have to be realistic about it. As, to use your example, you have a million and a half dollars left over, right? You can't go put a pool in.
Yeah, right.
Right? Because that was nowhere near in what you were talking about.
But you don't have to submit and say, should, should, you know, everything fall our way, which, you know, is unlikely.
Correct.
But should everything fall our way, these are among the things we would choose.
Correct. As an example.
And you don't have to spend it year one either.
No. And as an example, what is a reasonable thing is, you now decide that you have that much money left over, you want an air-conditioned cafeteria, okay? That, the air conditioning was part of your referendum, it's already in there, that's a reasonable extension of your, if you wanna go, okay, that'll, we, we did the whole 900 wing, we have extra money, we're gonna do the 400 wing for HVAC replacement, you already told me you were doing that, that's something that's reasonable. But if you wanted to put a pool in, as an example, to be, to go way back in Riverdale history, you know, the mural that we have on the front lawn, there was this whole, or in the front of the building, there's this whole myth that.
Pool mural.
Yeah, the mural or the pool. And the board at that time picked the mural, so there was no pool. That's a complete myth, it's a rumor, but nonetheless, that's a good example. You couldn't put a pool, right? But you could, you could do some other stuff that.
Okay.
Right? Could you change the mural on the front of the building? Yes, you could. Because that would be part of your finishes.
Put up a picture of a pool.
And one that's like holographic, so you're like, hey, has movement.
So for me, what, I think what it would be very helpful to the board, and I hope we could spend some time tonight, is to roll through the list of projects and determine or have some idea of, of, yes, let's refine these, yes, let's not, let's add some stuff, let's take some stuff out, you know, what do we all think? Because I don't think you're at a point, as a board, to be able to say, this is it, architect give us the number, and then we're gonna go. But I think you have enough information now that's close, and you can visually see it. You all have access to this. It's a good thing to take a look at.
Patrick, I have one more question.
Of course.
In your executive summary, you listed the items that you're suggesting for the high school, middle school, and district. Are they listed in a particular order of preference?
No.
No.
There's no priority to that list, okay? And in the executive summary, you'll see down at the bottom, I talk about the Hawk Day schedule, that's an era, there's no cost associated with that, that's not part of that. Yeah, that's an era that's in there.
So, Pat, my, my only question, all this, I mean, you know, obviously straightforward in what the architect recommended, what the administration would like to see as far as renovation, but the part that I feel we're missing is, okay, the recommendations that the administration made, you know, some of them are very straightforward, like, you know, replacement air conditioning, that's, that's a long-term maintenance thing, we're gonna have to do it, whether we do it part of the referendum, we do it 10 years or five years down the, however long goes, we're gonna have to do it straightforward. But the other things, like, if it's, if it's renovating a room, or, or where, you know, we, we wanna change a room into something else, whatever those are, what I would like to know is what we, what we feel the school gets as an outcome of that. Beyond just like, okay, we have a pretty, you know, we have a new room with new finishes, which feels great and everything, but what does that give us educationally? Like, what does that add to the school if we're spending $15 million, or $7 million, or whatever it is? And then what, as a board, like, what are the initiatives that the board would like to see as part of referendum, to kind of take the school from where it is? You know, if we're gonna spend $15 million or $7 million, like, what, over the course of that, that timeframe that we're paying this off, where does that move the school to? Other than, other than just kind of maintaining the school?
Sure.
So I think when I, like, sometimes when I look at the list, right, it's, it, it's more of like, oh, it's maintaining the school. It's not, I'm not seeing where, like, it pushes us to.
So the, the first part of your question, I think you have some partial answers to, because in the executive summary, I talk about what items we're gonna do, we're preparing for, for the next school year, '23, '24, and then '24, '25 beyond. So as an example, I showed you the tech rooms that are here. We're proposing next year that we add an additional section of, of tech in the middle school, and hire an additional teacher. So those three rooms that are currently chopped up, we're talking about making those rooms more viable for the growth in that program going forward. Behind this, behind the auditorium, you have three rooms that are over there, which are the old metal shop, an office, and an old wood shop. All of the equipment has gone out of there, the wood shop has been taken over by art and TV media. The office is kind of vacant at the moment, and the other room is really just a concrete shell that we teach robotics in. So those three rooms, just like in the middle school, we're talking about. we're talking about retrofitting those so that you have the ability to grow your technology piece. And I use that term very loosely. I don't mean just computers. I mean robotics. I mean using some woodworking. I mean doing some 3D, 3D stuff that goes on in those kinds of spaces. So renovating the nutrition room as an example is to keep it as an up-to-date, up-to-square nutrition room. Renovating the room next to it, which is the music studio, is because we need that space to be flexible, that we might not be offering music studio as, as it is now, but something quite different from it. So we're looking for flexible spaces in there. So there's not a lot, to answer your question, there's not a lot of stuff, if you will, that we're proposing to have these, you know, huge, huge changes to the physical layout of the facility. Obviously, a facelift in the auditorium was kind of what Stephanie had talked about before in both of those areas. Clearly, the one big new program that's kind of embedded in this is the addition of the 18 to 21-year-old program. And there's two aspects of that. One is in here, in the high school, as an example. Sorry. You can see that here, under the first tab or the first section, modular classroom space for the 18 to 21-year-old program, there's an estimate in here of $1.25 million. We know, Trudy and I know, that other school districts near us built their modular space for a lot less than that number. Okay? But the second aspect of that is, in the report that I gave you, which is not in here, is utilizing the space adjacent to the athletic director's office, which has an egress right from the parking lot in and out as a life skills area, where you could put in, you know, washers, dryers, kitchen-type things so that students have the ability to get the life skills when they're there. Some of you have been to our Hawks Cafe, which goes on right here. I don't know if you caught any of the news tonight, but Hackettstown has a similar program to us and they were on and we weren't. But we were first. We're going to have to talk to those people. So anyway, the, the point I'm making is that Riverdale has been a kind of a leader in this area, particularly with our transition program. We have a lot of stuff, but that we're using space here and space there. We grab it where we can in order to run the program. This would create a space that would be dedicated to those kinds of students here. Because, you know, me and Trudy and I have looked at this number. At this, this, at this number, it's not necessarily going to be to your advantage to bring your 18 to 21-year-old program inside.
So this modular, so like the modular classroom kind of thing? And it was hard to get here?
I have lots of little ones.
Good.
But it was hard to get kind of what Doug was talking about from the report from that department?
Correct.
When they were talking about the numbers of students and, you know, who would come back or what potentially be open for, for other districts. It was hard to reconcile our expenditures because they're not sort of listed in there specifically with what we gain. Are we, are we at the get-go net even? Are we at the get-go, you know, down $500,000 that would be garnered in year two or three? Like, you know, there's always, like, there's no monetary value that you could put on, on having our students continue to, especially if they've been here, to continue to transition in their home school or to come back and be in an environment where they could integrate with businesses and, and community members as they transition. Like, there's, there's, there's absolutely no value we could put on that. It's amazing and invaluable. So that, you know, that alone will always stand, but you do want to put that on paper for people to understand why we, why would, what's fiscally responsible about doing this?
And so just to remind you, because we've had, one of the problems, of course, that occurs when you work as a board is that you, you have these board meetings and then you have a chunk of time and then you have another board meeting and then another chunk of time. So the dots are the meetings and you have to kind of keep connecting the dots and sometimes it's hard to do that. So when we've talked about 18 to 21-year-old program, I'm going to say kind of what I've said to you before. We're going to have anywhere from six to 12 kids every year that we're supporting in the 18 to 21-year-old program. They're not going to be the same six to 12 because they age, they change. But you're going to be anywhere six to 12. I think a realistic number for us to plan for is six, six kids, right? So that roughly, those kids will cost us right now anywhere from $75,000 to $100,000 a year. Some a lot less, some more, et cetera. But anywhere around there as an average. So.
Total or what is that?
Yeah, per child.
Per child times the.
Number of kids. So if you use six, right? If you use six and use $100,000, to keep it easy, it's $600,000 a year, right? So you're going to amortize that against whatever your outlay is, right? And you're probably looking at a payoff of four to five years before you would get to that point where you could say, hey, I broke even. Right? Now, if more, right, if more students come back, you achieve that quicker. But if you keep that amortization schedule roughly the same, based upon six kids, you can see where you go.
But we would also have an opportunity to other students, correct?
Absolutely.
So which is like, which is very impactful for our dollar because that's tuition.
It's tuition.
Right, okay.
And after year six, we have a facility and you have the benefits that Stephanie talked about.
Correct.
Right, and.
And other stuff.
Correct.
It's not, it's not a 20-year payback. It's six.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's issues, right?
And we get to tailor our program.
Exactly.
Not that any program, not that the programs that we're utilizing are well-done, but we get to tailor our program. And if there maybe are students that could benefit from some of these other improvements in the facilities, they're on our grounds to benefit from it.
Correct. Absolutely correct. And you, you're only going to see that population become somewhat more stable, if you will, because Region Five has reactivated itself. It's refocused itself. We're still looking at our programs inside the district. But the Riverdale situation, which includes Oradell and River Edge, particularly River Edge because they have the Newbridge Center, that creates a continuum for these students to come in so they can go into that program as a pre-K. However long it takes them to get to K, that they, they take, but they have that transition point, pre-K to K. They go K to six, however long it takes them, then they come here, seven through eight. And we have some students that are in this situation who spend four years in the middle school. But then they still transition, like every other child, eight to nine. And then they go nine, however long it takes them. So what I'm saying, the six to 12, we, we have a number of students here who are 18 years old, who are 19 years old, who come to school every day because they're still haven't finished their academic progress. What I'm talking about here with 18 to 21 are those that satisfy the graduation requirement, but we still have an obligation to provide support to them. We're still going to have that mix.
Right.
Right? But we're going to have the ability to flatten that mix. And again, what it, to me, what it does is, is it provides those students, those young people with the same transition points as everybody else.
And maybe you said this and I apologize if I wasn't paying attention.
No, it's okay.
Is the modular the only way to achieve this?
No, the modular.
Because you talked about maybe repurposing what exists in the, right? Because you need different permissions to have the modular than you do if we added on, like, if we repurpose what actually already exists.
So the reason that modular is listed here, it's, and again, let me just repeat. It's a two-phase issue. Because I really believe that the space that's underneath, that's adjacent to Athletic Director's Office, would be an excellent space to repurpose for life skills for these students. So you would have a piece of that. The modular piece is because another, a neighboring school district just went through the process of building an 18 to 21 with a modular classroom setup. So we have a pretty good understanding of what it would take to do that. And over by the lower parking lot, we have water, sewer, and electric, which we could, that's why the modular drops into that space that's over there pretty simply, without having to run new set of utilities, which is enormously expensive. But we, we already have water, sewer, and electric over there because it's feeding both the, the. Actually, no, it feeds the garages, I'm sorry, and the lower lot because the water actually comes all the way from, I think it's Willa. I think it comes across.
I understand, just to clarify, like modular meaning.
Right.
Because there's modular, like, trailer modular.
Correct.
And there's like, prefab.
Prefab.
And I'm assuming we're prefab, not like, not trailers.
Not trailers, yes.
We've, we've been through the trailers.
No, that's why, that's why, that's why I just wanted to.
Yes, not trailers.
You used the term a minute ago, you called it life training, right?
Life skills, yeah.
Life skills. At one point when we were talking about that, we weren't talking about just 18 to 21.
Correct.
We were talking about just life skills in general.
Correct.
Open to the school population, right?
Correct.
So when, when, are we mixing the two or are we talking about supporting both?
You're talking about supporting both, John. Programmatically, you, you have to identify it for the 18 to 21-year-olds, but if there's, I'm making this up, period two, three, and four are open, you could put sophomores in there to do that. You could put eighth graders in there to do that. It doesn't, that's not exclusive.
Right.
What, you have to identify the 18, 21-year-old program because there's a specific set of requirements to support those students.
So I think that's the narrative that I was trying to get. Because it, it changes the context and the story. So if you, in, in that terms, you can say, okay, that.
The benefit is much clearer.
Right, there's a, there's a long-term benefit, not only for the 18 to 21-year-olds, but possibly to introduce a program that we've talked about that, you know, it's kind of gotten lost in most school, a lot of school districts on life skills that we could implement.
Correct.
And then, and then I would assume the same thing would go when you talked about technology. You know, if, if, if that's the, I'll say that, the, the new, the new version of shop class, right?
Yes.
Which is, I know that's kind of where you're trying to get to.
Yes.
So what is that, you know, what is that, what would that program like, look like? So that, I think, at least for me on the board, like, that's like the big picture of why those make sense.
That's right, that's, that's what we're selling.
And, and I guess probably satisfy maybe some, you know, some thoughts from, I don't want to say all board members, but maybe some board members that kind of, that fits into the bigger picture of.
Right.
I think that's the narrative.
And if I can add to Doug, we, we had a category, like, maybe tech could be confusing, but it was steam.
Correct.
STEM, steam, stream. And I don't know what stream stands for. I forget what, what that is, but I wrote that down. So maybe tech could get confusing to, oh, let's do more computers to. That category, you know.
Yes.
I think if we tied it to all of those things as a byproduct of the investment, it starts to make.
Yeah, I always feel like there needs to be like the big, you only thought the big idea and then.
Yeah. And, and I think you're both right. I think that's a much more appropriate description of what I refer to as tech. Because we're, remember, I, I, when I went to school, we went to shop. You had shop as part of your curriculum. And then it slowly morphed into other stuff, right? And when I started my career and it, you, there was a lot of money that was available for Perkins for money and a lot of shops morphed into typing pens and word processing units and supporting those kinds of things. So I sometimes get stuck with the semantics of the stuff because it's just a mix from where I came, what I did when I was in school to, to now. So again, you know, again, I can't kind of go back to this more clearly. I think what the board is, is confronted with is identifying the potential projects that you would put into this. And at the same time that we would get, do that, we would have the architect revise the costs associated with it and at the same time draw your narrative so that you would have those kinds of things. And we had a very brief conversation in the executive, I mean, I'm sorry, in facilities. Forgive me for using it. I said, but, you know, gym floor, you know? I mean, it's pretty simple to say when you're going to replace the gym floor, what you're going to do. You're going to replace the gym floor, right? That doesn't have a large narrative associated with it. The narrative is that it becomes a flexible space that's associated with not only the athletic program, but anything else that you could run in there, et cetera, et cetera. And again, I think the most, the second most powerful thing about this report is your ability to walk through the facility in a virtual state. Those are the actual rooms that you, that we're talking about here now. The ones in the building. Well, we can do that.
That thing makes me nauseous.
We can do that. But like, I know a board member who tends to write emails at two or three o'clock in the morning. That board member may say, hey, I want to go online and take a look at this. I don't know.
That board member's the same person.
I, I have another board member who likes to write emails at 5:00 AM. That person may like to take a walk out there at 5:00 AM. So I think it's a very powerful tool for you. And you should also be aware that we use this to satisfy the security requirement that we had to submit to the state. Right? So we use this for two reasons. We got this report out of it, but we, we, you have to provide mapping of your facility to the school, office of school preparedness, which we were able to do. Trudy stewarded that through, which came out of this.
Just a question with that. We don't have to put that on our votes, do we?
No.
I just wanted to make sure about that. And then should, obviously, you know, should this go forward? We may have to renumber and.
You will.
Right.
You absolutely will.
Because three-fourth, what's, what's 127 and 120 now could turn into something else.
All right, a quick question on the three rooms that I usually jumped into that are labeled tech.
STEM rooms, 145 to 147.
Correct.
Those were the three rooms with the middle office that's not used? Is that what you were referring to? Is that right?
At the middle school.
That's at the middle school.
Oh, that was at the middle school, yeah.
Where am, where am I hearing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's at the middle school.
Yeah, 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 okay, so it was the other one.
The high school is 120.
Was it this one? 216, 218?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's 216 back there.
Okay, got you, got you, got you. Okay.
Right.
So is that a similar concept in the middle school? As 145, 147, those are two rooms or three rooms?
It's three rooms. There's an office in the middle. Very similar layout, John, very similar layout.
And so like, those two areas in both schools would fulfill the types of stuff that Doug was just talking about, creating those spaces for.
Correct.
Next-generation STEM, et cetera, technology.
Correct. And I, you should be aware that I, I do believe that the state will continue its efforts in what they call the fine and performing arts, which are going to be your, your music programs, your dance programs, things like that. And their, their STEM, whatever they're going to call it for the day, STEM, steam, stream, whatever it is. I think those efforts are going to continue. I think you're going to see more recommendations that are hard recommendations from the state saying you have to have these programs. I could, I, I see that coming down the line. So I think they're going to put their, their standards behind their mouth, so to speak, when it comes to this. So again, for, for us, the thing that would be most helpful to us is if we were able to identify potential projects. And then, you know, included in that, it's not just the list that's on here. If you have something else that comes your way, like, let us know so that we can try to get a better feel for what it is. I would ignore the money at the moment. I would ignore it. I know it's hard to say that, but I would ignore it because I think there are some estimates that are way too high or skewing this for you as it is. Correct.
One of the things we talked about was, and when I say technology, like, kind of global technology throughout the school. And the easiest one that I always see is like our SMARTboard. and the easiest one that I always see is like our smartboards. Our smartboards are really, at this point, antiquated, in that they're projectors and they're not like, you know, they're not the touchscreen ones where you can draw on them and do all kinds of stuff. I don't, maybe it's in here, I, but I don't remember like that kind of stuff being in here, and that's like one of the things we've talked about.
You wouldn't see that in here, and I, I would recommend that you not put that kind of stuff in here, because the useful life of those things is not that long. I would put them in as a regular part of the budget. To that end, what you're, what we're, what we've done in the middle school is, there's a pilot program going now in all of the math rooms with the newest version of the smartboard. It's, we, we bought them, they're in the math rooms now. I, I know that, because not only do I walk and see it, but I also, my teacher observations, I've done two math ones in the last two weeks, and I've seen them use the math board. So we're, we're going to do that as a regular part of, I think, the budget.
So when, but when you say not to put in there, it's like, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we had asked the architect about that, that, I thought they said that it could be included.
Oh, could be.
So what would be, I'm just curious, so what's the disadvantage of doing that versus?
Again, again, so I'm, I'm a little more conservative, I just, you know, you all know that I was a business official before. You all know that I also have a CPA background, I'm a little more conservative. I, I kind of think that if you're going to have long-term financing, it should be for items that have a long life. And if you're going to have short-term financing, it should be ones that have a potential short-term life. For me, anything that has a useful life less than five years, I would fund through my regular budget. Then I would over.
Just that, and I'm not being facetious, I'm just asking, how long did our current smartboards have been in the school?
Well, that's the thing, Doug, and that's a really good point.
Right, yeah, like, I'm like, they, they're, they're probably like, what, fifteen plus years old?
Yeah, and some of them, absolutely. And that's a really good point, because in schools, as an example, are, we tend not to keep putting things in the regular budget for regular replacement.
Right.
We, that's a problem that schools have had. And if you recall, what we did is we corrected that when we finally were able to correct the issues with the, with the laptops. One of the three-year refresh now with those. Boom, 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 boom.
And that's, that's the answer to your question right there, I think, is when the laptops became in vogue, it probably negated the, the smartboards to a point.
Well, once students use one as for the delivery of instructions, so they have different purposes.
I mean, look, the one thing that's hard to walk away from, we don't want to talk numbers, but when the architect talked about things that are included in the referendum, provided they qualify for the state assistance, where you get essentially a third subsidized by the state. So let's say we're refurbishing rooms. I don't know if you can just roll on everything in that scenario. So even though maybe they should be replaced more frequently, but if you get a third off or a third subsidy, that, that's, that's big. It's hard to walk away from that, as opposed to saying two years from now, funded from your budget, but there is no third, right? So maybe it's not the whole building, but maybe it's the areas we touch where, where the state throws something in, because that is helpful. I mean, a third of whatever amount you want to talk about, hundred million dollars, thirty-three million dollars.
Does that set us up to have that replacement program, you know, like to, to start cycling?
To start the cycle.
So if, if we have, you know, I, I don't know when they were all replaced, but let's say there's fifty percent are like.
Old, old, yeah.
Like, ready to fall off the wall, and the other fifty percent will last three more years or four more years, does that kind of set us up for that program?
And, and again, I, I think that is something that you would, we would want to consider, because if you, if you recall, over time, what's happened essentially is that the amount of money that we appropriate every year for the lease has been roughly the same. And it's been roughly the same for the last couple of years, the last two leases, anyway. However, what's happened is that the unit cost of the technology has come down. So as we've refreshed, we've been able to.
Like upgrade.
Upgrade. So as an example, when we first brought the, the laptops to the middle school, there were two different versions of machines. You had quote-unquote, a lesser version, and then the higher end at the high school. But as those unit costs came closer together, now we have a uniform distribution of the laptops in both buildings. But you're still only paying a million dollars a year, or whatever it is, that you have in there. And to your point, I think that's where, well, to both your points, that's where you want to get to.
Right.
So that you have a committed amount, and every year you just buy whatever you can.
Can I, can I maybe something just click based on what you said before? Are you saying, if we were going to spend a hundred dollars on projectors, you're saying spend a hundred dollars on the facility, because you're going to get, I don't know, fifty years out of the facility? So you're saying if the board is willing to spend a certain amount of money and go to, you know, the public for approval, spend it on things much longer lasting, is that what you were saying a little earlier?
Yes. That's me, okay, but.
And still get that third from the state?
Yeah.
But spend it on things that are going to just last much longer.
I also think that plays into really ultimately how much we want to go, like, what the dollar amount is in the referendum.
Yeah.
Which.
Which is another point.
expand and contract within, you know, what we.
Which is also another point for, another direction that you could take this. If you didn't want to focus on the potential projects, because you just can't get there quite yet, what it would be is to say, I'm, again, I'm making this up just so that we have an agreement, that the nine of you had a consensus to say, we're willing to go forward with a fifteen million dollar referendum, where we get a third back, what that comes out to be is twelve million dollars, right? Or we're willing to go for a twenty-five million dollar referendum, we get a third back, and it's going to be twenty million. If you did that, that's the other alternative, we could go through here and back into that for you.
I mean, which I truthfully think is probably somewhat the right approach. Because I think, I think in general, we know that we want to give back to, to the community from a tax standpoint. You know, we don't want, we're not going over, I mean, that's, I think, you know, I think that there's consensus on that. And, and so it's a matter of what, as a board, what do we feel comfortable going back to the community and, and trying to give, give some money back, but then also set the school up for the future, and then, and then, once we have that dollar amount, to your point, like, let's back into it, because that, that's going to wipe out certain things, right?
It certainly is.
Or maybe balance it too, right? If it's not enough, then, then somebody identifies.
Right, it, it certainly is.
You know, let's say it was two million dollars, and you say, well, you know, look, I can only back in so much, maybe we need more, but maybe there's a parallel path.
And listen, that's not to say if we all felt, let's say, you know, the board felt, well, we're fine with a twenty-five million dollar referendum, I'm not saying that's a number. We might go through this and say, well, you know what, truthfully, we only come up with twenty million.
Yeah, we don't need all that.
And we don't need the other, the other five, just doesn't, you know, we're not looking to create projects or spend money that we, is not necessary.
Correct.
Or that we can do over time with just general capital and so forth.
And is the state money for particular things, or is the state money a percentage of what you would go out to your, your community for?
Well, you, so let me back to your, let me try to back into your question. You would get a determination by the state, and it would say, we're going to give you this much money, which you would, based upon the project.
So there's no way to factor it in ahead of time?
Well, that's what he's tried to do here, if I, if I just show you on this point over here.
It's not a blank of thirty-four percent.
Generally speaking, he said anything new may not qualify. Let's say we build a brand-new building.
New construction does not.
New construction does not qualify.
It's almost.
Like the old days.
Yeah, the way he made it sound, they're incentivizing you to improve your facility, that loosely fits in. So just looking at what he put, as long as we made improvements, generally he implied like it would kind of qualify. But you decided to go build or whatever, that does not qualify.
So like, so like the modulars.
Correct.
Won't qualify.
Probably not, right?
Unless, unless it's an expansion of the existing whatever, and it's an improvement to the facility, because it can, but. So this is where I think the architect has to also come in and how it gets constructed.
Well, which also might determine what we ultimately put in there.
Exactly.
Because we can go, I mean, you can, you can go out for the referendum for the dollars. It just means that we're not getting anything back from the state on certain items, even if we're.
Correct.
Correct.
All right.
So like, where are we going?
What you would ask Trudy to do, and which she's doing already, is she would speak to our financial advisors so that you would set up your bonding process to be the most beneficial to you, right? It, it makes sense for us to have a callable bond, one that you could pay off if the interest rates drop. It's what we did the last time.
Right.
Okay, that's an uncommon thing for school districts is to do that. Sometimes what happens is you pay an eighth or a quarter point a little higher, because you put a callable provision in there, but in the end it could pay off, because, I mean, we used to joke about it all the time with our previous budget.
Especially DSA.
Right, presentations, but it really did have a very positive impact on it. So Trudy will be doing, you know, that kind of a thing for you there. But to your point there, you can see that column that's got the red at the top, said estimated DSA, up to thirty-four percent debt servicing. Okay, so thirty-five percent, thirty-four percent is like the blended rate, right? What happens is you'll get a little higher present, percentage on this, you get a little higher, a little lower on this. You're going to get a little bit less on your soft costs, your fees that are associated with it. But roughly speaking, your blended rate is thirty-four percent. And there are other columns that are in here, which we're not showing you. So if you try to spend your time taking the three, four columns that are before it, adding them up and taking thirty-four percent, you're not going to hit that number. You're going to waste, you're going to spin around like crazy. But when we get to the point where you said fifteen million bucks, eighteen million dollars, you know, a hundred million dollars, on an average, it works. And you would get that, you'd get the longer spreadsheet, which would show you all that other stuff that's in there. So there's two ways to do it. There's a list of the projects, I, I mean, I think, there's more than two ways. But for you as a board, for simple, list of projects, or hand them out.
I have just, you're right, we could go through the list right now. If there are things we feel we don't want to support on this list, how much work would it take the architect? If this is eighteen million dollars as we see it, to have them sharpen their pencils, how much do you think we could get this eighteen?
Because. Make it more realistic, basically.
Yeah, because you said there were a couple of things, like, for instance, the auditorium is well overstated. The modular, you know, it's almost a million dollars. You could build a nice house for a million dollars.
We believe, we both believe that's a.
That's probably on the high end. I mean.
Right, because remember, whenever I say me, I'm, it's the royal me, it's Trudy and I, we sit in a room, we go over this stuff, so it's not just me, I.
Okay.
I, I do want to say one thing, just in pricing in general right now. Everyone's mental norm of what something should cost, that cost like from three or four years ago, is totally blown out of the water nowadays. Like, I, because I get pricing back, and I'm like.
What happened?
Right, where did it come from?
Like, yeah, there's no other reason to, as I'm just being.
No, and, right, I totally understand, but.
Can we also do what Doug was talking about, I think, which will make this a little bit more real and see the output? Like, you know, those projects we talked about, could we attribute, I mean, I know we could do it off the dollars, but I think you have a list already.
Yeah.
Could we create a key, whatever you want to call it, and saying, these five items support, you know, those programs, this program and that program? Just to create, what's, what's the benefit of doing this? We're not just refurbishing a room, there's a reason why that, that got done.
Trudy, it's basically doing what we.
Yes, we can do that.
I think that will help a lot.
Having the script of law.
Yes, we can. Again, to create, to build the storyline.
Narrative, I called it, you called it narrative.
To use the narrative, to build that narrative line, again, we need just a little bit more definition from the board in order for us to, to do that in a reasonable way. Meaning either list of projects or amount, we'll work our way back to that.
Trudy, can we figure out what, what is the, what is the net zero tax? Implicat, thank you, that's the word I was looking for, thank you. Implication, what would, like, what is that dollar amount for a referendum? I'm just trying to get like a gauge as to.
Doug, like a no give-back number you're talking about?
Yeah, like net, net zero, net neutral.
Net neutral, non-creedinal reduction.
I, I don't know if you have that, you can look and see if you have that. You, you, again, again, connected dots piece. In the budget that you have, there's a page on debt service. You can see it, you have it now, you've had that information. You've had it as a part of every budget going forward, there's a, there's a line there that says, we're raising a million, two hundred thousand dollars for debt, right? So those numbers are there, you have a pretty good idea about it, but we're paying what, a million, million one, right? So a million one, you know, amortizing it backwards roughly, you know, what could you probably be at, or a twenty-year financing? You're probably talking thirty million dollars you'll probably get to.
All right, so what's presented is, is.
What's in that number? No, go ahead.
The halfway point.
Correct.
Doug, which do you reckon, because I wrote it down, our taxes in River Ridge went up by a hundred and eighty-six dollars. So, like, we can connect the dots and do the math, if we were to take out, we're really talking about minimal reduction, but it would still be. Our, in total, went up a hundred and eighty-six. If they're going to discount, say, our budget goes down by, so if we say we had a fifteen million dollar referendum, what is that number per year we pay out? A million dol, I, I do fancy math, like a million point something? But we're paying the one eighty-nine increase on a thirty-eight million dol, what was our budget last year in total? Thirty-eight?
Thirty-five.
So we paid a hundred and eighty-six dollars more for a thirty-eight million dollar budget. So if the budget drops by a million, right, with this referen, I'm sorry, you didn't, yeah, it would drop, because we would save a million if we did nothing, correct? Our current expenditure for the bond is a million, correct?
Yep.
So if we do nothing, in theory, we would save, help me, you're losing me, I'm, I'm a first grade math, but I'm. So, so we're not going to save a lot, it's not a big difference, so let's just do simple math, like, first, like, I'm thinking like seventy-five dollars. I don't know why I can't back into the math, but I'm just saying, like, split that number in half. And I even think it's actually way less than that, because that's if we did nothing. Like, it's only a million dollars we're talking about in our thirty-eight million dollar budget, so what is that really saving us? Twenty, by the way, I think we need to show a discount to the taxpayers, no doubt, but I don't think it's that much. Am I right in saying that?
I think that's what it is, like, that the actual, like, any day that give back is not. I'm not saying that giving, it's not in, you know, in, because some people, it is significant, but.
No, I understand.
You know, we're not talking about a thousand dollars to a family, or even, 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 even like three hundred dollars.
Right, no, because we only went up by a hundred and eighty-six, so even if we did nothing.
Right.
We would go down by a hundred and eighty-six. So if we do half of, half of nothing, or more than, it's say ninety, is that making any sense to anybody?
But we have to sell it, and.
So you're still going down by ninety, I'm making up numbers.
You know, we have to mean it, and so it has to be meaningful. It's not just, well, it really wasn't that much money, so we went.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not singering that, I'm just trying to come up with a number. We're saying you would either go down by a hundred and eighty-six, this is complete conjecture.
Well, that's, I was going to say.
Or you're going to go down by ninety.
There's too many other factors at play there.
So, but, that's what we're talking about, we're not talking about hundreds upon hundreds in either direction, if I'm correct. And the other thing, John, when I'm looking at, because it is extensive, if you look in the report, it does have all those different, what they want to do, the development of the media art studio, and the, and the development of esports, the development of the nutritional living classes, to, to develop any construction, like, all of that, like, the justification.
They can just cross-reference the list to those points, like, let's say that first point you read, say, okay, item one, three, and four is how we're executing it.
But those are, those are things that they would like to develop, those are not things that have been put into a program of studies or necessary will come to fruition. So again, you know, when you do the math.
There's a timeline, there has a timeline, like, they have goals, like, saying for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four, implementation, whatever.
I've made recommendations to, the ones that have been, been, that we're moving forward with are the ones for next year, twenty-three, twenty-four. There are, I, I am going to refi, refine that executive summary even further to, and, and to your point, match some of the narrative to this referendum project if you go there, and then give you some other recommendations. I, I am certain that not every one of those recommendations will go forward, whether it's this board, or a different set of leadership, or whatever it is. I'm certain that not every one of those things is going to go forward. However, it can be built in some way, shape, or form for your narrative that you're going to have. So I circle back again, because we need to have something that we can, some parameters to work within in order to give you what you just asked for. And that is, if you want to back into the projects, and that is you pick a number, and we go from there, right? And I would say, when you're picking that number. And I would say, when you're picking that number, you want to say the number to the taxpayer, because we'll figure in what the thirty-four percent is, we'll get that figured out for you and lay it in there, so.
I mean, it sounds to me, based on, based on the movement on the needle from a tax basis, that it's probably, you know, the kind of rethinking, it's better to go through the list and see where that totals out. Because otherwise, we're kind of picking an arbitrary, you know, if we pick fifteen million versus twenty million, it's, you know, so that's.
It's an arbitrary.
Twenty dollars a fan, like, it's not, you know.
Well, yeah, but you, you have, you've asked this before, and I, I mean, you, I mean, everybody, you've asked this before. You're gonna, you will see, or, or, people will see some offset if you're fifteen million and below.
As a reduction, basically.
Correct. You're higher than that number.
Right.
You're gonna really encroach upon if they're gonna see any reduction. And if the consensus is to provide a reduction, you know, you're kind of in that ballpark of where you're at now. Yes, Tracy Allen, you wanted to?
I'm just train of thoughts rolling through my head, I'm good, thank you.
Is it helpful to the board for us to know the math that Annette was trying to do? It sounds simple, but it's probably not that simple, is it?
Well, you can't, but you can't, you can't apple to apple it because it, because our, our thing changes every year.
Our debt service.
Right, it's, so, so.
It's directional.
While it says a hundred and eighty-six, right, depending on how the percentage does and all of that, you could still get an increase in your taxes even if we reduce the debt service, right? So, so you can't apple to apple that, it's just not possible.
But as a board member who, who kind of is, have seen the math for many years, is it helpful to you? If you say no, then that's fine, you don't have to have the information. But is it helpful to you to know what the numbers are that Annette was trying to do as a board? So you know what that is and what those thresholds are, which I think Doug was kind of alluding to? What is the threshold, what are the numbers? You know, and, and I agree with Doug, I think just picking a number by itself, I think it's the number and the list. Because if the number can't substantiate what the board is looking to accomplish before it gets produced to the public, then you've got to refine the number. So the number could be fifteen, but could you accomplish what everybody's looking for? If not, then maybe there's another dialogue with it. It's not an absolute number.
Right, and just.
So I think that, John, but I think that was a good, like, way to say, like, set the number and what can be accomplished within that number. And if we feel like we are not accomplishing what we want to do by having a referendum at all, then, then there, then there's that add-on. But like, to, to, to look at all the projects and then say, for them to do all that work and then, and then say, it comes out to nineteen million dollars and the majority of the board doesn't support nineteen million dollars, that's harder work to back down than to say fourteen or fifteen. And then you say, okay, you know what, but we're still missing that wiring, that, that, that path that was so important, right? Let's, we're, it, it's not going to add that much, let's add back in that wiring.
I mean, that, that's what I'm saying, just do both.
Come up with a number.
Fourteen. Just say come up with a.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm with you. Because I, I think we can get pretty close to that. With Patrick going back with Trudy, eighteen turns to, let's just say, sixteen. Then we knock out a couple of things on here. And if somebody looks at the master list and sees something that they feel we need, then we just start manipulating projects.
I mean, I don't have a problem with fifteen, let's say that was thrown as an example, but I'm also kind of stuck where maybe Doug is stuck. What does that really mean? If we do that, are we giving anything back? If fifteen doesn't give anything back, then maybe that's not the number.
Well, I'm just looking at this list right here.
Just one second, I, I got you, just a little bit of that thought. So, let's say that's the number, and that number also accomplishes a number of things. There is a give back, it accomplishes the projects. Where I'm a little stuck is, like Stephanie in the last meeting said, let's say, from the curriculum perspective, are we addressing some specific needs? So outside of the list that the administration published and the architect published, I haven't heard from anyone asking for anything else yet in any of the meetings. But then again, I'm not on that committee, and I'm not on some other committee. So is there other asks besides what the list is here to say, hey, can you go bring this down, you know, down to fourteen, fifteen, whatever it is? Are we asking for anything else? I think Pat brought that up a couple of times. What else are we looking for as a board that might be missing?
No, well, like, for, from curriculum, we've added a class, Biology Three.
Those aren't necessarily referendum items.
No, 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 but what, I'm trying to answer his question. You know, because I think that's where you're going.
Well, I'm saying, let's say you want Biology Three and there's no room for it.
But it's already in the budget.
How can I, can I answer it?
Yeah, yeah, no, go ahead, yeah.
So I think that as a board and as, as a curriculum committee, everyone is fairly dedicated to the concept of having more vocational life skills choices, whether it be within our building or within our curriculum. We may not be able to achieve everything within building that we could offer our students. I feel like we've talked about that and come around that many times, both administratively and as a board, that that's something we want to do. That's listed in, in choices that are, that are in here. I also think that as a board and as curriculum, we really would like to do that eighteen to twenty-one, if we can do it. I think that that's really been something that would be very impactful for our community, for our residents, that people can really stand behind and see why that makes a difference for a lot of people and why that makes a difference for us as a district. When, when Doug talked about, like, what's that really doing for us expansion-wise, right? How does that affect our profile, what, what does that do for us as a district? Little nuances of some of the things that maybe Annette was referencing, where we're talking about like those esports and particular types of courses have not been settled at a curricular level. I think different people on, on the committee feel differently about it. I think the administration might have different thoughts about it. But making the spaces available for those possibilities has no downside.
Right.
Even if we don't choose to do those possibilities.
You have to prepare to evolve, we have to have some fluidity so that we can evolve. And that being said, I don't see anything.
I'd have people sewing with their hands, but, you know.
And then, I, I, I don't want to just, I, I don't want to just go after individual people, but Doug, you were on facilities for a long time, you saw the list, you see what they picked. Like, from a facilities perspective, do you think there's like some significant items that are missing from what the administration suggested that we should be talking about?
I think like all the basic infrastructure stuff, like the air conditioning and those kind of things.
I told Pat I'll do all the.
I think everyone agrees on, you know, do it now or do it in, in four years, right? So it's just a logic to it, I don't even think that's, you know, I mean, we can discuss anything. I don't think those are the items that are really a discussion issue, I think it makes sense. If we're, if we're going for random. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna do the, the, you know, the, the ventilator units, we're gonna, you know, look at putting, I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, I never realized, maybe I didn't sweat enough in the middle school. I'm sorry, I'm, I never realized there was no air conditioning in there.
Where, middle school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think those kind of things, like, the general, you know, like, under the hood stuff, the, the quote-unquote non-sexy stuff that no one sees. I think that's, there's probably, at least for me, that there would be universal agreement that it's a no-brainer, that we do that stuff.
Like the generators.
Yeah, like the generators or, or, or control systems on the boilers that, to bring them up to date, that's all like very long-term stuff. I think the question stuff is, you know, like, the stuff that relates to, like, pure, I'll say, instructional education.
Guys, we're having like eight conversations here, I mean, can we just all maybe have one, if that's possible?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, I don't, I don't think, like, the base building, there's anything.
I, you know, I feel, I feel the same way, like, the items that they picked seems to be the stuff that I think Trudy originally talked to us during the last budget period. It seems to, it's gonna address some stuff that maybe is gonna come back later where the budget can't support, it's large-ticket items. So from a facilities perspective, it looks like that list is okay, and they're not glamorous. It's just infrastructure, it keeps the building moving.
If you are, if you're a building engineer, it's very glamorous, right?
So fourteen's been thrown out, Al is on board with fourteen, I am comfortable at fourteen. Chime in, people.
So, could I just ask, how long would it take the architect to rework some of these zones? I mean, I know you're not.
A week to ten days.
Because there were two line items on here that I don't have numbers for, and I think one is very important, up in the high school.
I, I would think it's a week to ten days. I ju, I will just remind everybody, next week, there's a state conference called Tech Expo. I don't, the architect probably isn't gonna be there, but I think some of the engineer people will be. So that's why I'm saying it's ten days. Count from today going forward, not be, next week could be a week to like thirty. I think that's a realistic time to give you what you're asking.
I mean, is, is that a start, is everybody okay with that? Because if we're looking at fourteen, fifteen with.
Fourteen.
Okay, I, I'm, right, but just tweaking this.
I think it's too long for the architect.
I agree with John.
I think it's too long.
You think we should be going for more?
I think that the tax implication doesn't.
I don't, I don't think that's the issue, I think it's more of like, what are we going to the public with?
Right, but what I'm hearing, like, four million dollars doesn't seem like a lot of money, but that, that would cut out maybe two products, projects. I don't, in my opinion, see two projects that I'd be willing to cut.
Oh, really? Oh, I think.
I could see.
I think that's fine.
I, I, I could see.
Quarter of a million dollars just with the gym floor.
Well, I was just gonna say gym floor, gym.
Right, but like, when you look at the gym floor, like, okay, cutting, cutting that out.
It's a start, that's a start.
Right, it's a start. But if you don't replace it now, when are you going to replace it? And what's the justification for replacing it?
See, the way I look at it as a taxpayer, if we can replace our, our turf field in our regular budget, we could do a gym floor.
Replace the floor in the gym, absolutely.
That's.
Well, that's a question for Trudy, do we have monies to do? Because it's okay to say that we'll cut it out of the referendum if, if there are monies to do it somewhere else, but if there aren't monies to do it somewhere else, then like John stated before, getting a thirty-three percent discount on doing something through a referendum might be more cost-effective.
Absolutely, it would be more, but again, that you have to sell to the public.
Right.
We could go with thirty million dollars with that kind of a, we're getting a discount.
Yeah, we also have to look back, I mean, yes, people have changed, people have moved in and out of both communities. But the last time we had a referendum at this building, it failed three times, three times, and significantly cut, like, millions and millions and millions off of it each time.
Yeah, but we were in the, we were in the twenty-nine to thirty billion dollar.
Right, you were in the twenty-nine to thirty, regardless, so, so let's say you go like here, fifteen, twenty. Times are harder for people, so that thirty million dollars back then, it's, you're fifteen this year.
But if you sell it, if you sell it that.
I disagree that the people who moved into town.
They're not gonna be affected.
Went into town in the recent years for the perspective of having a top-notch school district. The people who moved in during the pandemic, they went here for that, and I'm, they.
I'm not saying they don't, I'm not saying they didn't.
They put out this twenty percent over asking price.
Right.
I think that their school district is a priority, and saving a hundred dollars on their taxes or increasing their taxes, a hundred dollars, not, look, I have no money rules in my household. So like, to me, I don't know, it's worth the investment, it's worth the investment.
I'm not saying that, I just think it's hard to sell something like that in this day and age. If you're, if you're looking, if you're looking to go over fifteen thousand.
If you sell it.
Selling nineteen thousand parts, selling to our people.
If you go out there and sell it, that taxes won't go up.
But we can't make that decision, taxes going up, that's not our.
Because on the referendum, that's based on the rest of the budget.
But if you showed them on paper that the debt service.
Right, you and I understand the debt service, but let's just say I'm like the cute little house owner that just bought my house in Auradel, right? And for the last three years, my taxes haven't gone up, but let's say the money fluctuates and it's a fifty-three, forty, forty-seven, my taxes are going up, but you told me, Mr. Ficus, that my taxes weren't gonna go up. They don't understand that, they don't understand the difference between that.
So if I, if I, I know Annette's got her hand up and. Why don't you get in there, because I just want to comment on this for a second, but go ahead.
No, you may go.
Well, I just, I, I think with this conversation, we just jumped a little further down the road than we are. Is now we're talking about how to sell, we haven't even identified what it is that we're selling. So I, I think you were really close when you were talking about a, a number, because if you said to me fourteen million, I'm making this up, fourteen million is the total in the, after DSA column. Right?
Right.
So we already know that it's thirty-four percent higher because.
Right.
We're getting thirty-four percent back, right? So we, we know that the actual cost would be, I'm making it up, eighteen million discounted to fourteen is what it is. So you could, you have some flexibility, I'm sorry, Annette.
No, you're, you're the extra, that, that was, what I was saying was the numbers we have, that eighteen million one, is the, is, was kind of connected to the way the identified.
Correct, the list.
We, we said our, we didn't say, it's been thrown around fourteen, fifteen. We think this eighteen is already slightly inflated. Can we agree that maybe stick with the eighteen right now, because it's inflated? It might drop to sixteen, and then we can tweak some things, but at least we can get some hard numbers or we, can we agree on these projects? Because it sounds like we're very close with the eighteen, because the eighteen is slightly, we said, the modulars might cost less. It's not going to be more. So if we're saying, look, we have the list, and we've all gone around and said, what else do we like? And no one said, yeah, I really want, and I keep teasing you, Claudia, the B is on top of the roof. We're not adding it, you're out of the Bs?
I get my Bs.
But, but point is, we're not coming up with an add. So we, we might have it right in front of us, this, the framework, this isn't the signed-off version, this is the framework. And then we tweak these numbers more, but can we agree on the framework? And now we say, okay, the max is eighteen, and now we're going to come back and get a number, and it might be seventeen, or it might be whatever. If it goes above.
It's not gonna go down too much because there are two line items that are missing.
Okay, which are, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
The triple room by Dennis's office.
Okay.
And the STEM room in the middle school.
Got it.
By the way, if we, if we agree on a number, I, I think it's not an agreement of a number, I think it's guidance for a number. I think we should.
I agree.
This is, what I'm trying to say is, if you want to pick fourteen, pick fourteen. But I wouldn't, what I wouldn't want to tell Pat and Trudy is, make it at fourteen. What I would want to tell them is, come back if it doesn't work. Because we're not presenting anything to anyone, and we're not selling anything to anyone just yet. We're trying to get a line ourselves to see if we could stand behind it, right? Pick whatever number you want, let them go back and come back, and what I would say is, don't cut corners, do it the right way. Try to execute, you know, what Doug was talking about before, just make that narrative clear. So you don't come back and say, well, I cut it and I could do eighteen to twenty-one, but I can't do life, what do we call it?
Life skills.
Life skills. I could only do eighteen to twenty-one, I can't expand it to the rest of the students, right? That won't work, why didn't you do that? Well, because I cut out a half a million dollars out of the program. Right? So I'm saying, basically, just start there, but does it work? And I, I still go back to all board members. You know, it's a list here, are we missing something that you didn't see? Either, not as a list, but as just like a, a theme or a narrative or whatever, are we missing something here? They need to go back and figure out how to do it in this.
You can go back and look at this.
Because, no, but as board members, I'm saying, like, if we said, like, again, you know, we brought up a couple of points about, you know, life skills, let's say it was missing here, and they needed to go deal with another modular building or whatever, then they should go find it. You know, how do you put it in? Did they miss anything in the themes that we need to put in?
I think the only thing I would like to see is that technology, it's like, whatever that looks like, I would leave it up to you as far as like, is there an opportunity on the pure technology side to have that, some portion of that included? And like, how does that affect that eighteen million? Is it, is it nineteen million, is it eighteen-five? I have no idea.
You're talking about the modernizing of the building per se, right? Like, like the, the projectors.
Smart boards or projectors or like, you know, I mean, that's the one that.
I, I agree with that, and it, and it's easier to just pull it out at that point, say, no, you know, that, that just threw the number too high, take it out.
Well, so like, as an example, besides the upper gym floor, there's the athletic locker room update. I assume it's the one downs, in, in the downstairs way, right?
Both, both boy, female and.
Now, I, I would have no reason to ever go with them, that would be appropriate. But my understanding, I can't speak for the female, the males is like, not a place anybody wants to go. But do we also want to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a locker room that isn't treated like a seven hundred and. But, do we also want to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a locker room that isn't treated like a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar locker room? So, like, or, or take money from a referendum to do that? Is it, is it something that could be accomplished in a budget for much less because, and I'm, you know, I'm not maligning anybody, I'm just saying that, you know, because it comes in and it's, you know, quick this and that, jump things in lockers, blah, 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 blah. And there really isn't the care to make that invest, that high-scale investment in that space, right? So I think, you know, kind of to John's point, like, you know, what is that looking like? And is that something that could be backed down? Right, which is what, you know, we're all saying.
It's what you're all saying.
For Doug's technology, cannot be.
It's what you're all saying. And what I'm hearing, I, you know, I want to cut the conversation short because it's been a good one. This has been a really, and I appreciate the board taking the time to dedicate this portion, a good portion of the meeting to this. Because we're getting a good sense, I think, for, for the, how the full board is feeling for it. But it sounds to me like your net number that you're out here is fourteen million dollars to fifteen million dollars. You're right in that zone. That's your net number, for the most consensus. There are some who think it should be more, there are some who think it should be left, right? But I'm talking about the lowest form of consensus where we all go, okay, I can live with that. So, but at this point, what you're saying is, you can live with, given Trudy and I, that guidance to go back and really refine this and go from there. And that's good for us, that's good for us.
And Pat, I'll add one more thing, just to make sure, like, if we're gonna pay attention to sports, right?
Yep.
I think we have to equally pay attention to the music program, the art program, and education and other things, right? I don't think we should shortchange one program over the other. If we're gonna take a look at the programs holistically, I think we should have all the programs benefit from it. So we shouldn't, if we're doing locker rooms, then, and we can't pull out then the art rooms.
I agree with you, John, I agree with you.
If you pull out the art room, I mean, if we leave the art room, you can't take out music, for example. I think we need to kind of look at those, so they're good for the next ten-plus years, you know?
I think you gave us.
We're just trying to, we, we just want to make sure everybody's on the same page about the timeline.
I'm gonna just bring that down so that that's not up there anymore.
You know, the timeline, and Trudy, we need help. We need to have everything done by February thirteenth? If we, if we wanted to meet the September.
We're not gonna meet September.
That, that's just what I want everybody to be aware of.
I don't want to rush.
Oh, no, 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 but realistically, it would be, we'd be acting like.
Right, I just want everybody to, not somebody come back in ten days and be like, are we doing this, or are we?
Okay, that, that just, we still want to get, move sooner than later.
Absolutely, we still have to move, but we just don't like.
But nobody's under the assumption we're going for that September.
I have a question to Pat, and I asked in the last board meeting. Is there any advantage to September versus December?
In whatever shape or form, that December is not a good target? Because I don't, honestly, I have no idea how September and December were picked.
Well, they're.
September is the best date.
There's four, there's actually five dates that the state allows you to have referendum. There used to be, you could have it anytime you want to, that's not the case. You have five dates.
Okay.
One in September, one in December, the annual school election, March, and I think there's a June date.
Okay.
But statistically speaking, September is the most, is the referendum that gets the most passes, December is the second. And they're not, the deviation is not that great.
They're not that bad, okay.
But those two are the best statistically for boards. The other ones are less, way less.
I mean, as much as we might want September, if, if, if Trudy and Pat are saying that's gonna be challenging. And I think the architect from day one told us September was gonna be a reach.
Yes.
For us to sit here and mandate, go and make September happen, it's almost like we're, we're telling them to come back and tell us we couldn't do it. I think we take the extra few months, do it the right way, have a couple of more meetings, just make sure we're all on the same page, you know? So I would suggest December unless Pat or Trudy have an objection to it. Shoot for that. And don't miss any deadlines. You have budgets and you have everything else to do.
So you're gonna work on the numbers we spoke about? If needed, we can have a facilities meeting to kind of just go over the numbers first.
Yeah, definitely.
But this will be a full board decision. You know, we're not gonna come to the board with, this is what we want to do. This is not how this referendum is gonna work. Right from the beginning, I wanted all nine people involved, it's not gonna be a committee bringing it forward. But if we need to call something when they have the numbers ready.
However, we can look between finance, facilities, whatever, whatever they need to, you know, move the process forward, I think we should facilitate that.
And then if we're ready at the next board meeting to continue this? I mean, is our, is that gonna be?
We should be able to bring something.
Okay.
Yeah, we get you some.
Okay, good. So, everyone fine with that?
I just have a question, Trudy, why don't the team pack together the information for.
April, April something? It was April.
We have, we gave, we gave it to you, we're just looking for the right.
I believe it's May fourteenth.
That's even better.
But March fourteenth, you can make some decisions to give it up. Yeah, right there.
This is September, December.
We've exceeded some of the objectives that come in now, Mr. Trainor.
March seventeen.
Yeah, it's March, it's March.
March seventeen.
For the December deadline, it's March.
Oh, March?
Yeah.
We have to be done, March seventeen, right, Pat?
I think you should, because I also think.
You're not saying the board needs to be done, then you submit after that.
Right.
Or is it March seventeenth the submission date? Or is that the board is done date?
I, I, I think you reasonably want to be at a place where you all are in agreement by the end of February, first meeting in March. Because then, you know, you're gonna, you recall, you have to turn your attention to the budget, you have to turn your attention to some other things that are coming your way. But, that was very, very helpful, I very much appreciate it. And, so what I understood is seventy-seven million dollars we're gonna go for, right?
Yeah, that's.
Seventy-eight.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
No, 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 we have public, we have public comments.
Oh, I apologize, I never would have denied that.
No public comments. I may have a motion to adjourn for this.
I'll make that motion.
Was that Claudia?
I'll second.
Stephanie, all in favor?
Aye. Wow.
Ten fourteen.